Right, people need to know that. Although, the fact that it both starts with DMX.
I don't know. Oh, there's just one digit difference.
Well, it's two. It's DMX 310 and GMX 30.
Wait, I was thinking of all these 3, 2, 3.
But it's obvious to me what happened. He thinks that we just didn't get the correct read, but it's two different letters.
You hit every right.
You just go to the police department. And they say, "Oh, sorry." We're fixing it.
That's a pretty good one.
I don't know.
Thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules to come out here tonight, especially for those of you who are football fans. I know the Tigers are playing tonight. We can say that both grammatically correct and plural at the same time. So I'm going to call to order the January 13, 2020 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Douglas, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you can.
Tonight, we thank all the volunteers who serve on the city's official boards, commissions, and committees. They feed and exercise shelter animals, sell used books, supplement our police officers, honor veterans, promote recycling, preserve our history, interpret and defend our ordinances, and monitor our investments, among other things. They skip dinner, miss soccer games, lose sleep, and use vacation time on our behalf. They sometimes have to mediate between neighbors or choose the best from equally unpopular options. They do this with no reward other than the satisfaction of making our city better, which they do. On behalf of the mayor, the city commission, the staff, and the people of Royal Oak, thank you. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Commissioner Douglas did such a fantastic job teeing up the next item on our agenda, which is a resolution honoring the Volunteer Board of Education. I think I have my resolutions here. Let's see, we have some board members here tonight. If you guys want to come on up here. Mr. Brink, how are you? Is that Marty I see back there? Hi, Marty. How are you? So just like Commissioner Douglas was saying, I mean, this is our Board of Education members, not the full board, but these folks, day in and day out, really do care about our community. They work tirelessly to make sure that our schools here in Royal Oak are excellent. I have three children in our public schools. I know Commissioner Macy has three children in our schools, and I know Kyle Dubbuck has three kids in our schools currently, right now. And there's many people here tonight that have had their children go through the Royal Oak Public School system. And it's not easy. It's not easy. My wife is a public educator. I see what she takes home every day and the challenges she faces in the classroom. And I would argue that the board is no different. There are some tough challenges ahead of us, specifically working here in the state of Michigan. And so this is a little tradition that we've started here a few years ago on the city of Royal Oak, making sure that we recognize our partners in education specifically for your efforts and what you do for our community, making it an exceptional community. Public education is paramount to the success of our city, and it means so much to everything that we do, from public safety to our home values to where our kids will end up in their lifetime. So very grateful. Those informal words will now be followed by a formal proclamation. This is a resolution honoring the volunteer Royal Oak Board of Education. Whereas January is School Board Recognition Month, and therefore a time to salute the work of volunteer school board members and to celebrate public education. And whereas community governed public education has thus been called the backbone of American democracy and indeed one of the very foundations of our democratic society. And whereas publicly elected members of the Royal Oak Board of Education ensure that decisions on school programming, properties, and facilities represent our community's values, culture, circumstances; and whereas the school board members in Royal Oak are responsible for the education of approximately 5,100 students, providing oversight to a system with an annual budget of $62 million and almost 450 employees. And whereas, under the governance of the Royal Oak Board of Education, schools in Royal Oak are doing extremely well. Student achievement results are strong and trending upward. Budgets are balanced, and enrollment is showing moderate increases. And whereas Deborah Anderson, Carrie Beer, Gary Briggs, Jeff Brinker, Marty Cardamone, Allison Sykes, and Mary Ann Van Hitzma spend countless hours as volunteers attending committee meetings, serving as liaison to Designated Building and Parent Teacher Association, participating in workshops to stay current on the challenges and opportunities facing schools and remaining deeply involved in the community activities by attending various extracurricular events. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City of Royal Oak The City of Royal Oak City Commission expresses appreciation and gratitude to the volunteer members of the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education for everything they do to make the schools in the entire community a better place to live. So it's my pleasure and my honor to present you. Not both of these, just one of these. Yes, this one. Mary Beth Fitzpatrick. For those of you who don't know, Mary Beth Fitzpatrick is the superintendent of our school. So she is also new to us, two years now?
It's my third year.
Third year, okay. Two years going on her third, right? There you go. I did well in math. And so it's not just a volunteer school board that helps make our schools exceptional. It takes the dedication, not just of our students, the culture that's cultivated, but the teachers and staff from those who are teaching calculus to the janitorial staff that are helping make sure the building is clean and an acceptable learning environment for our kids. It's everybody in between. And we really do, I can tell you, I think Commissioner Dubbuck can tell you, and Commissioner Macy, it's nothing but impressive in our experience, both in our professional capacity here at the city commission, but also as parents, seeing the teachers and how well they work with the students, how well the staff greets us when we walk into a building. It's just Royal Oak schools, I can't overemphasize what an amazing district we have and how fortunate and blessed we are to live in a community with such great schools. And that takes the effort of a good board and certainly the hardworking dedication of so many educators and staff within our schools. So this is a proclamation honoring the professional educators and support staff of Royal Oak schools. Whereas public education is the foundation for a free, prosperous, and sustainable democracy. And whereas federal, state, and local investment into public education and public education educators is essential for our nation to prosper and remain free of tyranny. And whereas the heart and soul of many communities is their public school district. And whereas the heart and soul of the public school district are its many dedicated and professional employees. And whereas administrators, teachers, and support staff working in the Royal Oak Public Schools are highly trained professionals who care deeply about the well-being of each student with whom they work with. And whereas Royal Oak Whereas Royal Oak citizens are extremely fortunate to have access to an outstanding public school system that provides a top-notch education to the students and families in our community. And whereas high-quality public schools provide personal opportunities for growth and advancement and contribute to the economic vitality of a community in a myriad of ways. And whereas athletics, music, culture, and academics are a source made possible by teachers, administrators, support staff, and the services they provide every day. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City of Royal Oak City Commission expresses our appreciation and gratitude to our public school employees who help make our community be a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Mary Beth, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Well, I just want to say that Royal Oak is a wonderful place to lead a school district in. The board members are phenomenal. We were able to honor them in a small way on Thursday. And with the steps that you gave, and you think about the magnitude of the impact of a district on the city, we're equally well-supported from all of you at the city, as well as all the organizations here. So we thank you for all the support, and I'm just very proud to lead such a high-quality district. So thank you.
Just a quick shout-out to the students and the parents as well for helping make our schools an amazing place. I was at my daughter's swim meet tonight. And just watching the coaching, watching the kids cheer each other on and making sure that they watched every race. And it was just really heartwarming to see, in that particular instance, great sportsmanship. But I think that's really a reflection of the culture that we built and continue to grow in our community schools. So credit goes to everyone. We're very grateful for our district. So thank you. Go Huskies. Go Huskies Bulldogs. And then, in a couple of years, Ravens. Okay. That brings us to item number six, which is public comment. So just a few things before I begin public comment. The city commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the city commission on any related topic, whether it's on the agenda or not. I ask that comments be directed to the city commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. In addition to public comment, there will be a public hearing at tonight's meeting. If you're here to comment on first-watch restaurant requests for approval of their plan of operation, you can wait till that public hearing is open and comment at that time. If you wish to speak tonight, either at public comment or at the public hearing, please wait till recognized by me, the mayor. Raise your hand. Come up to the podium. For the record, we will ask that you state your name and address. Please be mindful that we want to hear from anyone who wishes to speak tonight. So comments are limited to three minutes or less, and we have a timer to help you keep track of your time at the podium. If you do not wish to speak tonight, please don't hesitate at any time to email the city commission with any of your thoughts, comments, or questions, as well as staff. Often, answers can get directly answered. If it's an engineering topic, can you email engineering? Or if it's a legal topic, can you email Mr. Gillum? You know, that's highly encouraged as well. Please note that the city commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes. And when the topic is addressed here at the table, we'll get your questions answered. If it's something that's not that we're not on the agenda tonight to speak about, the city manager is also taking notes and makes sure that he follows up on those items as well. So with that, who's first to speak tonight? Mr. Ashley.
What is being passed out is... My name is Alan Ashley, president of Royal Oak Manor. What is being passed out is part of the Arts Beats and Eats contract that you approved. It is Section 4, Sub E. And I am talking about the highlighted area where it states A, B, E. Arts Beats and Eats and the city agree to work to provide additional space for artists and vendors within two blocks of the festival. I would like to amend that to prohibit parking on Williams between 6th and 7th, on 7th Street from Main Street to Troy, and on 6th Street from Main Street to Williams. There is plenty of parking on the west side of Main Street, south of Lincoln, that fits the requirements for A, B, and E parking. Another problem we have is this is the year that Royal Oak Manor is going through its rehab. It will be starting early spring. That means 18 to 24 months of construction around our building. That means parking is going to be very limited, even for us and our members and our families that come to visit it. Also, if the construction is slated for the parking, the new apartments on Williams, on 6th Street, across from the fire department, that will limit even less the parking around our building. So we will be under construction for the next 18 to 24 months by having Arts Beats and Eats. And it doesn't say in this to park on Williams or that. There are plenty of parkings across the street, south of Williams. This will stop from people having to park beyond Knowles or park in the city parking garage. The police department said they will come and ferry our members from wherever. Sometimes it's 30, 40 minutes. During that four days, there are over 350,000 people down here. That is a stress on the police department to go pick up people from here or from beyond Knowles, which is about a quarter mile, or here, which is almost 3/4 of a mile, to pick up seniors and bring them back to Royal Oak Manor. That was the deal made with the police department, that they would do that. That is the worst use of police department uses for their officers, ferrying Royal Oak members back and forth from the parking grounds or beyond Knowles. So by prohibiting Arts Beats and Eats, that eliminates that need for the police department to ferry Royal Oak Manor residents. And I hope that you will consider this and remove I from the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. I'll go with Mr. Wolf, and then first. Then you, John.
Ron Wolf, 333 North Troy Street. Please curb your enthusiasm. Now, again, I'm begging all of you, including those listening tonight, to Google, please, Amanda Burden, Value of City Parks TED Talk. It's only a 10-minute thing. You listen to it. Now, why should... Why are 501(c)(3)Cs important for Royal Oak? It has been explained to me that 501(c)(3)Cs are not an easy thing to establish. You have to have committees for it. You have to have people that are keeping records. You have to... It's not easy. Now, just like you have grant writers, I think it would behoove the city greatly to pay someone a good salary to handle 501(c)(3)Cs and see that they are formed. We could use a lot of them. And why are they so important to us? Well, people don't trust government, not just you guys, but government in general. It seems everything they... Your tax for... They watch their taxes being used for something than other things that they were... Other than that, what they were promised they'd be used for. We're told by Governor Snyder, "We need road taxes." And he takes them and uses them for something else. It goes on and on. It isn't just Royal Oak. Now, a 501(c)(3)C is like a targeted missile. It's not part of government. It's targeted towards your favorite... What you really want to see benefit the city. And for instance, the library. I could see the library being expanded into a community center out to 11 Mile. The city park. I can see somebody wanting a community center. You know, the history of town squares and city parks, they were originally community centers, where actually people came to actually wash themselves, you know, because it was the only... And get water, because that's where the well was. So throughout Europe, central city parks are very important. And as I'm saying, people don't trust you guys anymore. And it seems to me that if I was wealthy and I wanted to leave a legacy, and I'd like to leave something that my grandchildren might see that I contributed something to someplace, like the Star Dream Fountain Plaque's out there. They're beautiful. I would like to donate something to my city. It bothers me when I go to... It bothered me the other day that I went to Holiday Market, and instead of something for the Royal Oak Animal Shelter, I see a big can for the Humane Society, which is deserving and proper. But this is Royal Oak. A 501(c)(3)C, if you want to benefit the Humane Society, I mean, for our Royal Oak Animal Shelter, for our city park, for our library, for a swimming pool, for anything you can name.
Mr. Wolf, I do need you to finish your last thought, sir.
Okay. And same thing I'm also saying, also for the DDA. The DDA, I'm sure there are people in the DDA that would like to also leave their mark in the city. So that's why an independent, non-governmental 501(c)(3). The only way I can see these things being done is the government helping in establishing someone who can... Who is capable of forming these 501(c)(3). Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wenland. Before Mr. Wenland starts, just, this is a little atypical. Mr. Wolf, we do actually have a 501(c)(3)C formed that is the charitable arm of all these community organizations you mentioned. We worked on that all last year, and we do have it in place to support functions like the library, animal shelter. But also, I know Commissioner Douglas worked tirelessly in leading that effort through Roots. And so we do have that in place. And if you want more information, be happy to give it to you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Wenland, I'm sorry.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is John Wenland. I live at 703 Irving Royal Oak by the residence of 86 years. And maybe trying to get to 87. I got through 87. I'm here tonight. You probably know about the Royal Memorial behind us. And Wednesday night, there's going to be a decision of what they're going to do about the Royal Memorial. One is to move it 40 feet towards Troy or something like that. And the other one is to leave it where it's at. I want you to think of... I have a number I want to give you. I want you to remember this number. It's a very important number, 188. To me, that's one of the most important numbers that's Royal Oak should remember. It's a very important number. In a minute, I will tell you why. But before I get into that, I want to talk about the Royal Memorial. I personally think that the Royal Memorial should be placed, leave as is. It's in a good spot. It's a place where family and visitors can come and visit in a quiet, respectful, quiet place. And this is very important. And not only that, it needs also a green space, which is important. I hear that Canada, when they have one of the criteria over there is that they have to have a green space if they want a Royal Memorial. I don't know if that holds up now or not, but it used to be about 10 years ago when I found that out. The reason why they green space is it's a nice, warm feeling. And it's so important that you have a place like that for these men that lost their life so we can enjoy what we're doing today. Now, I said about the 188. I can give you 188 reasons why. That's how many names are on the Royal Memorial. And here tonight, I have some copies of the names of all those 188. I got a few I'll pass out to you and the people behind me. But the people that's watching this TV, remember, remember 188. They paid their dues. They paid their ultimate price. So with that, I'm going to close. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to give my feelings about this point of view. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wenland. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Williams. I live at 17043 Coral Gables in Southfield. I'm the post adjutant, which is the assistant to the commander of the American Legion post here in Royal Oak. I'm here tonight. Normally, I'm not available on Monday nights. I have a longstanding commitment with my church on a Monday night. There's no service there tonight. I consider this to be very important, though, to be here also to help back up John. I've known John now for about 10 years since I became a member of the post. The Royal Memorial is a very important part of our post's history. The Royal Memorial is a very important part of our post's history, and I'm going to kind of say, as a resident of Southfield, I would hate to think that my city of Southfield was going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to move a memorial 40 feet. I've heard that that's the estimate to move this thing. It's in a perfect spot right now. I can't see any reason for it to be moved. So that's my point of being here tonight. And I don't know if you're aware of this or not, but our post is named for John's uncle. The Frank Wenland Post is named for John's uncle, who was killed shortly before the Armistice in World War I. John's a very committed guy, and I'm here to back him up. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford in Royal Oak, here to do a little trash talk tonight. I apologize for not having enough handouts. I had 11 copies in my briefcase and somehow only came up with six when I grabbed them to bring them tonight. The subjects are the 13 individual trash cans that are at the corner of the Beauty Salon Building on the southeast corner of Washington and Fourth Street. You know, if I did something like this, as much as you love me, I would have a ticket on each one of those cans. Now, there are two buildings there. The first one's built out, and they have 17 stations. They're building out the second building, and I assume they're going to have at least the same number of stations. So now, does that mean that we're going to go from 13 trash cans to 26 trash cans along Fourth Street? I don't think so. And if you look at the second picture, it gives a little better picture of the cans, and it also shows why they have to have trash other than behind their building. There's no place to put it. If you look at the next picture, you can see that the kids have already started tagging these trash cans. And what I propose is that, on the second page, where that gray SUV is, if you were to license that spot for a couple of dumpsters, that would solve the, that would solve the problem. And you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to charge much to make up for the fees. Just round numbers, and numbers confuse things, but just round numbers. 30 days at $12 a day is 360 a month. If you just had 12 stations, that's less than a dollar a day per station. When Woody's was in town, I leased a dumpster space for their compactor, and they were paying me more than that, so. I guess I'm a little concerned with the view, you know, Fourth Street is a major thoroughfare coming in and out of downtown, and I just don't think it's right to have trash cans on Fourth Street. Now, Laura went to the DDA, and I tell you, she didn't, she didn't receive much joy there from the DDA, so that's why I'm here tonight. So please take action on this. Thank you.
Mr. Harrison, sorry to put you on the spot. Actually, I noticed these as well, and I walked by, I was like, that's odd. They kind of popped up on me. Is that, they're out there all the time, right? So it just wasn't trash day that I?
I assume so. Every time I come downtown, I see them.
Okay.
They're there on Sundays, so. And trash day is Tuesday, so.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Would you speak tonight at public comment? Alex?
No.
Oh.
You've got one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Alex Williams. I'm at Mitchum Chapel AME Church at 4207 West 14 Mile. I've done this at least once before. I just wanted to, because we, we get charitable donations from residents of the city and obviously from our, from our congregants, and I wanted to, I feel like it's appropriate that we give a report on what we do with those donations. Many of them are anonymous, a lot of them aren't, but, so I just thought, again, it's right to tell people what we're doing with the money that they donate to us. So in the last year, and this isn't an all-inclusive list, so forgive me for that, but we had a Pink Sunday worship, where we had a special collection to donate to breast cancer awareness in October. We had two outreach events at Cass Park, where we donated socks and gloves to the homeless. We donated $300 to UNICEF, that's the United Nations International Children's Emergency Fund, and it was associated with trick-or-treat. So our kids went trick-or-treating. They brought, we weighed the candy they brought in, and we donated $5 per pound, up to the 60 pounds. So we maxed that out at $300. We support Lighthouse of Oakland County, I think I mentioned that before. We did a special collection for Thanksgiving. And also, in total, we collected 556 pounds of food for Lighthouse of Oakland County. And that's an ongoing collection that we make all year. Also, we adopted two families at Christmas time through Lighthouse of Oakland County, one with three children, one with four, and we helped to round out their Christmas lists as they probably wouldn't have anything that time of year. Also, again, we help with Royal Oak Manor's parking fees. I think they're covered through the end of this year as a result of a donation that we received and contribution from Mitchum Chapel. We donated $2,100 for hurricane relief in the Bahamas as well. And again, that's just part of what we've done, and so to encourage folks who maybe haven't, or who are interested in looking for somewhere to donate where the money's going to go to good causes, we encourage folks to do that. Or, or just, again, as being a responsible steward of what people donate to our church, I wanted to report on what we've done. Additionally, we will be participating in the MLK Service Day at Berkeley High School. I think Pastor Boyd has been in touch with you about that, and so we'll be contributing to those 400 backpacks full of stuff. So we've donated, we've collected for the contents of those bags, and we'll be committing our time as volunteers there as well. So thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Alex, and thank you, Pastor Boyd, and all your congregation. I mean, you guys are always stepping up to the plate and helping shape and make our community better at every opportunity, so we're grateful for what you do here.
Thanks.
Thank you. I know I'm supposed to gavel down the clapping. I just forgot to that moment. Who's next? Anyone wish to speak? Ms. Harrison?
Before I talk about, this is to keep your little meter from not running yet. I want to answer a question that you people at, I think it was one of the meetings in December. 11 Mile on Main. So I went to the closet and dug out my 1950's map. At 11 Mile on Main, on the southwest corner, was a drugstore. I couldn't remember the name of it.
Roamains.
Roamains, okay. I didn't grow up here, so. That's on the southwest corner. On the southeast corner was a gas station. And it, the building is still there. That's what the restaurant was, and then they added on the kitchen on the side. And the pumps is where the outside eating area is now. The northwest corner, you're going to love this, was a parking lot right on the corner. And there was a building in the next lot, and it was the Michigan State Liquor Store. That's where everybody went to get their liquor. And on the northeast corner was another gas station. The original owners were the Cullings. The family owned it. And then, when they, when Mr. Culling moved up the street on Main Street and bought the other building, the Kevorkians took over the gas station. And yes, they were related to Dr. Kevorkian. So there's your answer. If you want any, just call me. I'm home, I retire. I can answer your questions. Anyhow, I have been a resident and a business property owner in the city since 1974. My husband is a lifelong resident. I would like to counter comments made at one of the last month's commission meetings. I opened my retail business in March 1983, and retired and sold it in 2017. For 35 years, I've lived in two neighborhoods at the same time. Home in north Royal Oak, Mary Ann lives around the corner from me, and my business was downtown Royal Oak. Home is in a quiet neighborhood off Woodward. Woodward is always very special to me. I grew up in Detroit. When I found a house one block off, I had to have it, and we still do. The downtown in Royal Oak was also a neighborhood, a business neighborhood. The difference between the two was that one had houses and the other has buildings. The comment was made that now that all those car lots and car repair places were gone, it was now a neighborhood. Wrong. Building 6, 8, 12 levels of buildings does not create neighborhoods. People create neighborhoods. The owners of the businesses on Main and Washington and the side streets were my neighbors downtown. For 28 years, I knew at least 80% of the owners of the businesses downtown. Bank presidents, car dealers, barn restaurant owners, retailers, art galleries, office workers, apartment dwellers, hair salons, et cetera, et cetera. Those owners and their employees would volunteer, volunteer to help Downtown Royal Oak Association, which I was president of, an arm of the chamber, to put together events and attractions for our downtown. We started such events as Taste of Royal Oak, art walks, Christmas parades, spectacular, T-shirt contests, clay and glass, school art display windows, Christmas decorated window contests, world's largest garage sale, sidewalk sales, just to name a few. These local owners, and I stress local, contributed either physically or financially. Also, many of the businesses sponsored our local kids' sports teams and the Jack Salter Boys and Girls Club. When the Corps came to town, all that support blew away. The big-name people think of only one thing, and there is zero support unless it's tied to a political favor. I did forget one event that was really popular. It was called the Spring Cleanup Saturday. We, meaning the owners, put on our rummyest clothes, dragged out our husbands, and cleaned the sidewalks, the alleys, and the railroad area, too. Then Tom Trice with Greg Rasso came with their trucks on their day off and picked up multiple bags of garbage. That's the downtown I remember. That was my second neighborhood.
Ms. Harrison, I do need you.
Yeah, I'm done, I'm done. So next time, when you shoot off about the downtown now being a neighborhood, don't bother. There are still people around that remember the real Royal Oak downtown neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. All right, anyone else wish to speak tonight at public comment? Going once. Mr. Maguire.
Hi, I'm Mick Maguire, 4456 Arlington. Want to talk about marijuana again. I just, I got a vote on this tonight, and I just really believe this is just going to bring trouble. We're going to have more undesirable people coming into the neighborhood, because a lot of places are not going to be selling marijuana. So a lot of places will be, people will be buying marijuana here and taking it to other communities to sell. Okay? And you're going to have more car accidents, that's for sure, if you've got people on marijuana. You're going to have more police issues if you have people on marijuana. Okay? Nothing good is going to come from this. I don't see how selling drugs is ever going to break anything good to the city. Okay? I can't imagine, everybody here was talking about having children here. I can't imagine they say, oh, I was the guy who voted to have drugs come into the city. It was on my watch. I don't understand that. So, and also, once you let this in, if you let this in, you can't get rid of it. Once you've decided to let these people come into the community, open stores, spend money, make investments, whatever the problems are going to be, you're going to be living with them. We will, as residents, be living with the problems, because once they come, how are you going to tell them, hey, we no longer like the way this is working? No, I know you spent a million-dollar investment here in a building and putting all this in here. How are you going to get rid of them if you don't like it? If there's some problem comes up, I think we should really wait, I think we should not do it at all, but at least wait until you find out what's going on with these other communities to find out what other problems you've got. Because, you know, in a year from now, the story will be told about what's going on in Ferndale. And you'll know, hey, do they have problems? Were there more accidents, more trouble? You know? So I think at least you should wait on this. You know, you are the city fathers. I know people voted for this. That doesn't mean that they were doing, that they were thinking that, a lot of people voted, they did want to decriminalize this. They really didn't want in their neighborhood. They weren't thinking, oh, by the way, they'll be opening a store down the end of my street. You know, when they voted to legalize marijuana, they just didn't want to see a lot of people going to prison over this. So I think you've got, you've got a large situation going on here, and you really need to think about it very seriously, because once this is in, it isn't going away, and this is on your watch. So this will be always, whatever comes of this, it'll be this city council, this mayor that made the decision to bring this, because it'll probably, once it's here, you're probably talking about forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maguire. All right, anybody else wish to speak tonight at public comment? Going once. Going twice. Okay, we're going to bring the meeting back up to this side of the table. Public comment's closed. There will be an opportunity to speak at the public hearing for the First Watch Liquor License Plan of Operations. All right, let me find my agenda here. All right, that brings us to item number seven, which is the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Macy?
I'm with approval.
Motion by Commissioner Macy. We have a second by Commissioner Dubach. Discussion on the agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Commissioner Lavassar.
I would like to remove item I with regard to arts, beats, and eats.
Okay.
And also, K, sub 3, the pension report, Michigan Department of Treasury Form 5572.
Anybody else? All right, that gives a consent agenda, which is, consists of the city commission meeting minutes, December 9th and 16th, 2019, approval of appointments committee recommendations, approval of appointments committee rotation, claims, December 20th, 2019, December 30th, 2019, January 3rd, 2020, January 14th, 2020, approval of purchase orders, Department of Public Services request to fill vacancies, approval of appointment of representatives to southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery, SACRA, and water, which is SACWA authorities, approval of appointment of representative to Woodward Dream Cruise Board of Directors, award of contracts for technology work, Royal Oak Civic Center, and receive and file the non-action items, which now consist of September 2019 expenditure and revenue, summary variance report, fourth quarter 2019 training evaluations forms, 2019 other post-employment benefits report, Michigan Department of Treasury Form 5572, and finally, the December 2019 investment report. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion on the consent agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. This brings us to item I, formally on the consent agenda. Commissioner Lavassar, approval of revised Second Amendment for fourth restated Arts, Beats, and Eats Festival Agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Gill, my understanding, this issue came in front of us back in October, where we were looking at an extension of the contract with arts, beats, and eats, and the commission voted to extend it at that time. I objected at the time, not because I have anything against extending the contract with arts, beats, and eats, but I thought we were rushing it and not taking time to see what type of community input there might be to improve this contract. If I am understanding correctly, even though the commission approved the contract back in October, it has not yet been executed, and that's because the DDA has not approved that contract as it was initially presented. Is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, that is correct, yeah. The DDA, specifically, the DDA agreed to act as, if you will, a sounding board for the, for the downtown businesses and the neighborhoods relative to the festival each year. So the DDA wanted that language into the agreement. So the DDA wanted that language into the agreement, number one, but then, probably more significantly, from the DDA as a whole, they wanted the ability to reconsider the amount of their sponsorship fee if parking revenues were not sufficient for the DDA to be reimbursed in the future. So they specifically wanted that language into the agreement. So because this agreement is different than what was approved by the city commission, it's back on the city commission agenda tonight.
Okay. My concerns right now are the same as they were back in October, and that is, I want to make sure that before we extend this contract, we are getting feedback from those that are impacted by Arts, Beats, and Eats. We did hear from Mr. Ashley tonight with regard to parking and how this impacts the Royal Oak Manor. I do believe, rather than approving this, that the appropriate thing to do would be to gather that feedback and make some additional edits to the contract based upon that feedback. What, what type of action would we need to take tonight in order to take those type steps?
I think the action that would be necessary would be to direct either the staff or the DDA, although you can't really direct the DDA, you can request of the DDA, that they obtain additional input relative to the festival, and then bring back potential amendments to the agreement at a future date. The action would be not to approve the, the agreement tonight, that's for sure.
Okay. In that case, I will bring a motion that we request the DDA to seek that feedback, and absent their agreement to do so, that staff takes measures to gather public comment, public feedback, so that we may see how we may be able to improve this contract.
Motion by Commissioner Lavassar.
Nop.
Second. Discussion. Any other discussion, Commissioner Lavassar?
Nothing further.
And Commissioner Douglas?
What constitutes seeking feedback?
Well, we did receive some feedback from Mr. Ashley tonight, and there may be other folks who had some experiences during Arts, Beats, and Eats. I know I shared some of those things that I received with Mr. Witz, but there may be other things that people, you know, that they endure, they live through during Arts, Beats, and Eats. They may not bring it forward. I want to give them an opportunity to bring that forward, give us some things that we can understand and better understand how it's impacting them, and where appropriate and where we can make some improvements to this contract.
And, and how are they, I mean, by just asking them to seek feedback, I mean, that's kind of, doesn't really have much teeth in it as to how they go about it, how they notify people that they're seeking feedback, where the opportunities for feedback are.
Well, I think I would leave that to the DDA if they undertake this task to decide the format, and if they don't, I would hope that staff would have some perspective on how best to approach that.
Okay.
Mr. Macy?
So that was essentially the same questions I had. From whom are we seeking this feedback, and in what manner do you want the feedback? I guess it seems odd to me that we have a contract laid out, and what we're asking is for the public to read the contract and tell us what they think about it. It feels like that's what we were appointed to figure out to do, and the DDA specifically is representing the downtown businesses and the retail and the restaurants. They should be getting, they should have been, be getting feedback, but they should also be representing that group. So I'm trying to clarify, is that the impacted group that you're talking about? Are you talking about residents like Mr. Ashley, who would, you think, have feedback on the ABE?
It could be anyone who's impacted. You know, for example, this past summer, I recall one woman being concerned because there essentially was a bus stop, a temporary bus stop set up right in front of her home, which caught her off guard, and just the communication aspects that were involved in letting her know, hey, by the way, this is going to be a pickup spot right in front of your, your front yard here. And, and just, you know, letting us know about these type of concerns so that we can say, you know, we can do better, we can find some ways to make sure that Arts, Beats, and Eats is a good neighbor for everyone here at Royal Oak.
But for Mr. Gillum, what's the consequence at this point of delaying this action?
Well, I can't speak for Mr. Witz. I think his concern is, is obtaining the, the extension so he can move forward with his efforts to obtain sponsorships and entertainment in the, the years of the contract going forward.
But he already has this year, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
Yeah, this is the exact same conversation we had when this came before us in November or October, and the conversation we had then is that the festival's been in the city for about 10 years, and it looks dramatically different now than it did 10 years ago, and that's because we have been consistently collecting feedback every single festival from residents and business owners alike, and working in good faith to ensure that the festival is efficient and clean, and, you know, limiting the inconvenience to residents and businesses while still being successful and becoming synonymous with, you know, the brand of the city of Royal Oak. So putting a hole in everything to do what we've been doing the entire time, I'm not understanding what hasn't been happening that will happen should we not pass this contract because it has been happening. We have been consistently improving the festival every single year. I know the, the concern that Mr. Witz brought forward in October was that this is the smallest window that is, that he's, there's ever been. Before, there was an extension of the contract. Well, how much of a financial concern that is for the viability of the festival, I don't know, but I don't see a reason to wrap more bureaucracy around this when what we have is working. Our feedback mechanism is working. We've been working year after year in good faith with Royal Oak Manor, and if the police, if the police partnership is not working, we have been running shuttles. You mentioned bus stops. We run shuttles, the extension parking lots. If that's something that we need to do to, to have the Manor be one of those stops to bring people to and from the lot, that's fine. It's not a matter for the contract. We can do those things administratively internally, so I don't think there is any reason for this motion, especially if it's, the goal is to create a forum to point out every possible inconvenience or tweak we can make to the festival that has 300,000 people come through, parking in our city, visiting our city. The population swells, right? There's music until 11:00 at night. If, if you want to know people's concerns, you're going to hear them because I hear them every year after the festival. And we, again, we're continuing to work. I don't know what pausing this contract does to, to improve that, so I'm not going to be supporting this motion. I don't think it's necessary. I think it's redundant and overly bureaucratic.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add to that. You know, certainly Commissioner Lavassar, feedback's important, and maybe we have different approaches as how we get feedback. You know, I receive a lot of feedback. I'm engaging with people at the festival, with neighbors that have issues. I get emails, phone calls. I talk to people throughout the year. Sometimes it's a call to staff to say, hey, we have a situation here. Can you help support, you know, and figure this out for small issues? When it comes to bigger things, over the last, I guess you could say, we're up here, what, eight years, nine years, we have taken a lot of the feedback that we get on a regular basis. We don't typically wait till, you know, a contract is due to solicit feedback. This is an ongoing, living, breathing thing that, that we do as a, as a commission and in our role as commissioners, and I can point to emails, phone calls, all of these things, up to the event, after the event, throughout the year as they pop up. So I feel very comfortable that, you know, we've enlisted the feedback of all of the stakeholders in this event, and we continue to learn more and more. Things change, dynamics change. We matriculate that. We, we take it into account, and we, we make changes as necessary. And I think that, you know, maybe, I guess when we talk about feedback, to me, it's the responsibility of all of us to be soliciting and getting feedback throughout the year, if not years, as it relates to something like this. So I'm very grateful for everyone that's reached out to me and that has fielded my calls when I inquire about Arts, Beats, and Eats or anything else, and I feel very comfortable that, you know, this contract is pretty solid and that, you know, we can move forward with it as is. So Commissioner Macy?
Or Mr., Mr. Gillum will add something, and then Commissioner Macy?
Just a comment, I think, from the perspective of the DDA and a little bit of the procedural history in front of the DDA. By virtue of the fact that they, the interim city manager, I sit on the DDA now, so when the extension of the ABE contract first went to the DDA in October, it was a conceptual extension because we didn't actually have a document to present to the DDA at that point in time. So what the DDA had indicated at that time was, they were supportive of the extension of the contract, but they also had concerns about issues that had arisen from members of the downtown business community that had been communicated to some of the members of the DDA. The agreement then came to the commission in the form of an actual document that was approved. That went back to the DDA then, and before the DDA was willing to act on that agreement, the DDA collectively insisted that the members of the DDA's Consumer Marketing Committee meet with Mr. Witz to discuss the feedback that the members of the Consumer Marketing Committee had gotten from either other members of the DDA or downtown business owners regarding the festival. And that meeting did take place. And then, when the agreement actually came back to the DDA for approval, the Consumer Marketing Committee reported to the DDA that that meeting had taken place, and I think in part based upon the comments that were made by Mr. Yezbek and Mr. Safia, and I believe Matt Riley, I think, is the third member of that committee, but don't quote me on that, that that meeting, those meetings had taken place, then the DDA unanimously approved what you have in front of you tonight. So I think the DDA recognizes that there's a need for continuing input and feedback, and that's actually incorporated into the document because the DDA agreed to the request from the city commission that it'd act as a sounding board in future years. So the DDA is satisfied, and I think, again, the DDA is, is of the opinion that that feedback has, at this point, has been obtained and has been addressed satisfactorily to move forward. So that's kind of where the DDA is at right now.
Thank you, Mr. Gillum. Commissioner Macy?
So that's helpful because it adds to what, to the thoughts I had already about this, is that the mayor and Commissioner Dubbuck's comments are well-taken, that we are getting, receiving feedback about this all the time, but we didn't make any changes, as far as I can remember, to this contract. And the DDA, it sounds like they, they took some time, solicited feedback, and then did, in fact, make some changes. I don't find it extremely likely that we would be making a lot of changes based on what we, what we gather, if we hear from people, but it doesn't seem like it hurts to ask, to spend some time. I guess I would want to hear from Commissioner Lavassar a date that we want to put this back on the agenda. I don't think, I'm afraid shoving something on the staff or the DDA that's as vague as collect us some feedback is gonna, does not exactly have a time limit on it and might make this drag out quite a bit, and I don't want to do that to anybody involved. I don't know. I guess I feel like a few weeks of collecting feedback from people outside of the DDA's purview might be, might be instructive for us as we examine this contract because we, we have not proposed changes to this.
I will just argue that I understand that, and, you know, some of the changes that have been incorporated into this haven't happened overnight. We've done this for 10 years, so I can guarantee you the first year, the first round that we negotiated, there were a lot of changes based on feedback. And you're right, it's unlikely that we're going to get anything new or substantiated. We may get some complaints, which we field all the time because there are some people that, you know, say, well, I don't want the festival to be on, you know, Friday, so cancel Friday. And I don't know that we're going to make that change into the, into the contract because, you know, the feedback has been, for the majority, has been very positive as far as this festival. I think that, you know, you also have to be cognizant of the fact that there's only two things that we have that are scarce for us and our staff. That's time and resources, and, and resources in terms of money. So if we're going to ask them to do this, it may seem okay, you know, to go back and get feedback, but they're going to put effort into it, they're going to work on it, and if we're going to get nothing new or material that's really going to change what we have in front of us right now, I'd rather have them spend that time doing something more productive for the benefit of our neighborhoods for what it might be. So for me, whereas we might get some feedback, open up the window, we're asking the staff to work and to spend, even if it's five hours, 10 hours, 20 hours, that's time that could be spent doing a lot of other things that we have on the agenda here tonight, or in general, you know, really making a meaningful difference of, you know, doing something that, you know, for parks or something else that will really lift our community up. So, you know, there's only so much time, and there's only so much money, and so in this case, it's time. So how we want to spend staff time, I don't know that we're going to get anything back meaningful that will change the outcome here because we've been doing it for 10 years. If this was the first round, you know, the first renewal, I'd be like, yep. I mean, I believe that's what we did. We had, I can go back and take a look. So that's where my head's at, so I won't be supporting the motion.
Anybody else? All right. The motion on the table is to direct staff to go back and obtain feedback other than what's been received through the DDA and through us commissioners, to have some sort of channel up to your discretion, is what I understood, and then bring it back to us once that feedback is garnered. Did I miss anything, Mr. Gillum?
If I recall, the motion was for the DDA to obtain the additional feedback, and if the DDA wouldn't or couldn't, then the staff would be directed to do that.
Okay. Okay, that's the motion on the table. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Have a hand in the nose. Okay, motion pass, or motion fails. Okay. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, I would approve, I would move to approve the revised Second Amendment to the fourth restated Arts, Beats, and Eats Festival Agreement.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Dubbuck. Discussion. Commissioner Lavassar?
I would move to amend the motion to include an amendment that reserves the parking immediately around the Royal Oak Manor to be reserved for the residents there, and direct staff to find other parking that Arts, Beats, and Eats could use that did not surround Royal Oak Manor.
We have an amendment from Commissioner Lavassar. Is there a second to that amendment? Commissioner Gibbs, second. Discussion of the amendment. I'll just add that I would not be prepared to vote on anything as specific as that, especially when our dedicated, hard-working staff have been working cooperatively through the Police Department, Planning Department, you know, to address all issues and concerns related in that area. Mr. Wolf, you're speaking a little too loud. I'm going to have to ask you to keep it down, sir, okay? It's distracting for us. Thank you. So, yeah, I won't be supporting that for a whole myriad of operational reasons, let alone some other merits. So, Mr. Macy?
I'm just going to reiterate what you just said, is that I feel like our staff has been working on this, and every year that Arts, Beats, and Eats come up, we hear about that there is, there's concerns and that they have been working with the Manor, and I've been really impressed with what they've done, and I'm thankful to them for, for continuing to do that and, and making it work, and I can understand that, that there's going to be problems with parking. There's, that's a huge problem during Arts, Beats, and Eats, and I'm, I think the Royal Oak Manor deserves some special attention, and as far as I can tell, we've given it to them.
You know what? You're out of order, Mr. Wolf. You know, this is the people's place. We ask kindly for respect. Mr. Wolf, you're out of order, sir. Have a good night. All right. So the amendment's on the table. Any other discussion on it? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Amendment fails. Back to the original motion. Any other discussion on the original motion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Commissioner Lavassar, item K dash I, 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 three.
Thank you. Ms. Rudd and I exchanged a couple emails earlier today with regard to this format. It basically talks about the state of our pension funding, and I, I thought this was important enough not to just bypass without some greater review, bring in, you know, educating both the commissioners, both the public. Julie, if you could elaborate on this, following up on the questions I posed to you earlier.
I believe it was the last meeting we had the actuarial evaluation reports of the, both the retirement system and the retiree healthcare system. We went through the funded status. What this report requires is that it go on the city commission agenda and also the website for informational purposes only. What the state, the point of this is what the state wants to see reported is based upon their uniform assumptions, what funded level both the pension trust and the retiree healthcare trust individually are, and that is reported on lines, 30 on the healthcare report and on 26 on the pension system report. In addition to, another thing that they do, they, they ask us to compare the actuarially derived contribution, it's an annual figure that gets calculated off this report, with our government, all governmental funds revenue. I don't know why. It's just maybe their way of analyzing, thinking, generally speaking, much of It's just maybe their way of analyzing, thinking, generally speaking, much of the liability rests in the governmental funds. That's probably correct, but not all of it. We have a lot of funds, our water and sewer funds, our motor pool fund, our parking enforcement, IT fund, we have numerous funds where this liability rests, but I think it's just, they didn't want to make it too complicated, is what I speculate, I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay. The, was, I'm thinking specifically with regard to pensions. Does the state, the state law provide certain numbers, thresholds where if, if a community is, has insufficient funds or is using too much of its revenues for paying for pensions, it's, it's a red flag under state law?
It's "and," not an "or." So if your funded level is under 60% and your, your ADC, your actuarially derived contribution is, is greater than 10% of your total governmental revenues, so it has, both those conditions must be satisfied, and then you kicked into a status where they review you and there, it's likely that you'll have to put together a corrective action plan.
Okay, so, so for sake of simplicity, if, if, let's say you have $100 million of liabilities, but you've only set aside $60 million of funds to cover that, you're basically right at that threshold for that leg of the calculation, if I'm understanding correctly.
For that year.
All right. And if you have, say, $50 million of revenues and you've got $5 million worth of expenditures that need to go into the pension, you're basically right at that threshold as well, the 10%.
Correct.
So it's 60%, if you're below 60% funded or above 10% of your general revenues, that's those red flags.
And, yes, both conditions, yes.
And, I'm sorry, and. What are our numbers?
For the pension, you asked, the funding level is 63.4 using the uniform assumptions, and the, the ADC calculation, meaning percent of governmental fund revenues, is 10.8.
All right, so with regard to the leg as far as having sufficient assets, we are above the 60%, but just by a couple points.
Correct.
All right, with regard to the percentage of our revenues, we're actually a little bit above that. That would be one threshold that we've, that, that would be one of the red flags, one of the two red flags that would trigger an issue for us.
No, nothing's triggered because we don't satisfy both.
Understand, but, you know, we, one of those two has been triggered, the other one has not.
It's a trigger of an "and," so it's a formula.
Understand, I fully understand that.
Yeah, well, it is over the 10%.
Right. Okay, so, so basically, if we have a bad stock market that could push us under the 60% threshold, which would put us in a problem on both of these, both of these fronts?
Yeah, if we, if we have a condition where gains are at a level for one year, then smooth the other three, three years, and that's what we do, a four-year smoothing, then that's possible. It would need to be significant.
Right. And had, had we not bonded out a significant portion of our pension deficit three years ago, we would have had a situation where we would have been concerned by the state to be in, in a red, red flag situation, a, a, a situation where, where we would need to take corrective actions.
Yeah, it's likely we'd probably be at 55% on the pension and probably 20 on the O-PED.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone want to make a motion to receive and file? Commissioner Dubac?
No move.
Motion by Commissioner Dubac, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Lavassar. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, this brings us to item nine, which is the Michigan Liquor Control Commission licensed establishment. Nine A is the public hearing for First Watch request to approve new plan of operation. Chief O'Donoghue?
Yes, Mayor, City Commission, we do have a request from First Watch Restaurant Incorporated to transfer ownership and location of their Class C and SDM liquor license with Sunday sales permit from Pontiac to 30995 Woodward, Suite 405. Additionally, the applicants request a new Sunday sales permit and new outdoor service area permit. Applicants will be doing business at First Watch Restaurant. First Watch Restaurant is owned by FWR Holding Corporation. Both FWR and, and First Watch corporate officer, officers are named in the memo. The applicants are requesting, or are, have purchased a license for $79,000. They also intend to spend over $360,000 on furniture, fixtures, equipment, inventory, and an additional $712,000 on site improvements in the new building. This project will be fully funded from revenue generated from other First Watch restaurants. They will lease the building from Beaumont for $13,713.13 per month, and this, they'll pay for that through business sales. First Watch operates a daytime cafe, serving breakfast, brunch, and lunch. Some select locations serve alcoholic beverage. However, food remains their primary business activity. This concept began in 1983 in California, and they've expanded over 200 restaurants in 26 states. Out of all those locations, only 14 have a liquor license, and although this would be the fifth location in Michigan, this will be the first Michigan location seeking a liquor license. We spoke to all the other licensed, out-of-state licensed law enforcement from those cities. They all say that it's a well-run establishment, and they have no issue with their operation. The applicants have employed Christine Pamela as the Director of Operations. She's been with First Watch for nine years and has 32 years of experience in the food industry, and she will be responsible for day-to-day operations. If approved, they'll operate as a casual comfort family restaurant. Requested hours of operation are 7:00 AM to 2:30 PM, seven days a week. They, their menu will feature freshly-made-to-order breakfast, brunch, and lunch entrees. Their food-to-alcohol ratio is expected to be 95% food, 5% alcohol. They'll have a very limited alcohol menu featuring some draft beer, champagne, and craft cocktails. They'll, First Watch Restaurant will have about 1,792 usable square feet inside with 500 square foot outdoor service area. Proposed interior seating is 100, is for 150 patrons, eight at the counter and 22 in the outdoor service area. The applicants have not yet applied for their permit through MLCC but plan to apply once they have all their approvals and they get closer to spring. Ultimately, final approval is set by the Police Department for both inside and, and outside. The applicants are not requesting an entertainment or dance permit. The SDM license, which is part of the purchase agreement, will not be needed and will either be put in escrow or just canceled. The Police Department has no concerns with this operation and, and no objections. If, if ultimately approved, the applicants will have to comply with all planning, zoning, and building requirements and restrictions.
Questions for the chief? Questions, I see the petitioners are here, so maybe ahead of the public hearing. If you want to come up, tell us a little bit more of what you're doing and...
Very good, Mr. Mayor, thank you, commissioners. Steve Grobel, I'm the attorney for First Watch. With me is Christine Pamela, who's the Director of Operations for Michigan. I think the chief sort of laid it all out. If you're not familiar with First Watch, we're relatively new to Michigan, there's four currently. I think the closest one is over on Big Beaver, near Rochester Road. We are a breakfast brunch place, we do a lot of, everything is fresh, we make a real nice breakfast. First Watch has now started to bring in some alcohol to its restaurants. The chief is correct, this is the first liquor license application for a Michigan location. I do, I should let you know, we have been approved by the MLCC. Our, our liquor license transfer application has been approved, so obviously it's not been issued yet, we are still under construction. Hope to be done in April?
No, opening is set for the middle of March.
Middle of March, so we're well on our way. We are going over to the Woodward Corners there, over on 13 and Woodward. Again, it's a very limited, it, we don't have a bar, per se, you can't go into First Watch and order a gin and tonic or a rum and coke. We have a set alcohol menu, mimosas, Bloody Marys, sort of typical brunch drinks, if you will. They're made in the back, brought to the table. We have a two-drink maximum for any customer, you can't order more than two drinks. And as the chief mentioned, we're closed at 2:30 in the afternoon, so, you know, I don't expect there to be many issues. Again, 95 to 5% alcohol, and that may even be high. We don't sell a lot of drinks, but First Watch has found that the customers have requested those, so they have now decided to try and put them on their menu. So if you have questions, specifically about operations, Ms. Pamela can answer those probably better, not probably, definitely better than I can, so happy to answer the questions you may have.
Questions? Commissioner Cruz?
I don't have any questions, I have a testimonial. I'm familiar with your restaurant that's down in Akron, Ohio. It doesn't have a liquor license. It's been there for three or four years, I believe. My dad died in early December in Akron, and my sisters and brothers and I, after the death, stayed in that area for about a week up until the time of the funeral. And our hotel just happened to be across the street from the mall where First Watch is located. And my sister, who's from Minnesota, was familiar with the restaurant from another location, perhaps in Minnesota, I'm not sure if you've got, she travels a lot, so she may have found you somewhere else. But we were in your restaurant a lot because your breakfasts are fantastic. And we were there so often that your staff got to know us and know who had coffee and who had tea in the morning and who just had orange juice. And they knew why we were there, and they just took very good care of us at a hard time. So I'm delighted that you're coming to Royal Oak. I don't care whether or not you get a liquor license, but I'm fully supportive of your request for it. You're a fantastic restaurant. It's going to be much too close to my house because it's less than a mile away, and we'll be thrilled when you finally open. So welcome, welcome to Royal Oak.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sorry for your dad, sorry for your loss.
Any other questions? All right, well, I'll ask you to take a seat real quick, we'll open up the public hearing, and then hopefully you're still available if some questions pop up out of the public hearing. All right, I'm opening up the public hearing, same rules apply as to public comment. Anybody here wish to speak tonight at this public hearing? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring the meeting back up to the side of the table. Are there any additional questions for the chief or the petitioners at this time? Okay. Commissioner Perush?
I'll move approval of this request.
Motion by Commissioner Perush, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, we look forward to seeing you. Good luck with the, with the build-out. I don't know if it's easier or harder with a brand-new building, I imagine, has its pros and cons, but a lot of exciting stuff happening up there at Woodward Corners, so, great location.
Thank you.
All right, this brings us to nine B, which is Smokey's Cigar Lounge and Bistro request to amend the plan of operation. Chief O'Donoghue?
Yes, Mayor, City Commission, we do have a request from Smokey's, located at 303 South Main, to change their current plan of operation. Specifically, they're requesting to increase their hours of operation, add an entertainment person, entertainment permit, and add ambient music to the outdoor service area. Currently, they are, their hours of operation are 10:00 AM to midnight. They're requesting to remain open until 2:00 AM, seven days a week, serving both food and alcohol until closing. They're not requesting any changes to their seating. This, this license is one of the ones that approved under the bistro concept, so I think they're trying to take advantage of a little leniency there on the hours of operation. They're also requesting to add a entertainment permit, which will permit them to, to add a live comedian on occasion. They'll be applying through the MLCC for that permit, and they have agreed to sign our entertainment agreement. Although they're approved for the outdoor service area, he's never actually got his permit from the MLCC. He'll be working on that, and he's hoping to open up an outdoor service area, and he's also requesting to play ambient music in the outdoor service area. Our experience is Smokey's is an incredibly well-run establishment, the owner is on-site all the time. I can personally attest to that when I stopped in to visit. And over the last year, we have not responded to any calls regarding the sales of alcohol. This would be the third variance from the redevelopment bistro concept, if approved. And the applicant would still have to comply with all planning, zoning, building requirements and restrictions, but again, the Police Department has no objection to this request.
Any questions for the chief? Commissioner Macy?
Do you feel a little smug because you told us so?
Aye.
I think you do.
The owner is here, too, if you'd like to speak. Elliot?
Elliot, I think I can see you back there. I'm not, yeah, there you go, the lighting, yeah, come on up, Elliot.
How you guys doing? How you doing, Mr. Mayor, commissioners?
All right, my name is Elliot Arable. I own the Smokey's cigar bar and bistro right there on 303 South Main Street, and I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Dubac?
I'm just wondering if you can speak a little bit to the substantial renovation you underwent over the last couple of years, and, and, you know, Smokey's, obviously, is not a smoke shop, it is a lounge and bistro.
Yeah, yeah, so we, we tried to take advantage of that bistro concept license. We evolved, we went from a retail establishment, doing business on that block for many years, to, to bringing food, bringing alcohol, and still allowing smoking of cigars there. We do have a smoking exemption through the state of Michigan, but, yeah, it was extensive. It took a while for us to get this thing finished while being, you know, open for business with limited capabilities during that time. But end result is what we, we, we've been there right now, doing this for over a year now, learning every single day. A lot of our customers are coming back with stories of, "We used to come in here a long time ago, and you look a lot different now. We have really good food."
Not you personally, right?
I may have gained a few pounds. That's about it, I hope. I lost a little bit of hair, and that's about it, too. So, yeah, so with food and, and alcohol as an addition, I think people are really liking it.
Any other questions? I mean, I'll just add, you know, I had the opportunity, with three kids, we don't get out much, but we found our way into your establishment not too long ago, and the food was absolutely amazing, I have to say. Very impressed, and, you know, whether you're, I'm not a smoker, but whether you're for smoking or against smoking, whatever it may be, I don't, I don't smoke cigars on a regular basis. It is something unique we have in Royal Oak, right? We have a establishment where you can, you know, smoke cigars in the...
Smoke them if you got them.
If you got them, and then you can get served food and a nice whiskey, whatever it may be. And that's something unique, and so I think, you know, if there's, you know, you guys obviously aren't causing any issues in our community, that concept seems to really work well, especially for, you know, maybe a more mature crowd, and just something unique that Royal Oak has, and, you know, personally, I'd be happy to, to support this because I think it is something different and, and unique, and the quality of your product is, is fantastic, so.
I do like to add, we do have a, a state-of-the-art ventilation system that, it's, it's an overkill for the space that we need, but for this type of, of operation, it works wonders, and people do comment on it many times. So you walk in there, whether you are a smoker or non-smoker, if you love food, you'll really enjoy our place, too, and not be bothered by that, by that smoke.
That's true, true story. Commissioner Dubac?
Sorry, I thought we had a public hearing, but we do not.
We do not have a public hearing for this one today.
I'll move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Dubac, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion? Discussion. Commissioner Dubat?
Yeah, I would just echo your comments that this is a truly unique experience in Royal Oak. I don't think the police department or any of us have any reason to anticipate that this would cause any problems, so I think that's great. You're gonna be able to continue to build on the success. I mean, the transition from, you know, it's like a retail smoke shop to what your establishment has become, I think is, is an amazing addition to the downtown, and it's truly something that is unique, so.
Thank you. I heard some comments earlier about, you know, downtown being a neighborhood and, you know, big corporations coming in, but you're a story, like many other stories, in our downtown, where, you know, you see the world evolving around you, and, you know, you've, whatever, they bootstraps, pulled them up, whatever that expression is, and you really made, taken something that, you know, was an issue for you guys when the banning of smoking in places, and turned it around and created a plan and created something really unique. And you're in there every day. I hear testimony, you know, the chief, when I was there, you were there, your family. You guys are hard-working people, the quintessential, you know, American story. And, you know, we're proud to have you in our downtown and be part of the fabric of our neighborhood in the downtown, so.
Thank you.
That means a lot. Commissioner Levaser?
First of all, I will support the motion. I do have concerns, though, and I expressed those when we first, when we gave the first exception to this bistro concept. By extending the hours past midnight to 2:00 in the morning, I think we've effectively gutted that ordinance, and I think this was the wrong way to approach it. I can in good conscience say no to this business, or we've said yes to two others so far, but I do think we've effectively gutted that ordinance.
Commissioner Dubat?
I think, I think that's true, and I think the reason that we allowed for that to happen is because the state effectively rendered the bistro ordinance useless, so it can't serve the purpose for us that it was at the time. So now we're basically unfairly hampering this handful of folks who got into the bistro ordinance, now that, but now folks can just go buy a classy liquor license and bring it in for, you know, 30 grand. And so it was a cool concept at the time, and I think helped to establish and nurture some of these smaller, cooler places, but, in spite of that, which I totally agree, that the ordinance has kind of been gutted now, but it's not serving the purpose anymore, so there's no reason not to let you capitalize on the great business that you're doing.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you had to buy a local license at $200,000 that you would have been able to evolve this concept, you know? It was kind of this tool we used with some protections on it, so it's good to see the evolution.
It would've taken a while.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion on the table. Call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, good luck.
Thank you.
See you, Elliot. Okay, this brings us to item number 10, which is the extension of prohibition on marijuana establishments, second reading. Mr. Gillum?
Mayor Fornian and City Commissioners, as you've just indicated, this is second reading on an ordinance that would, if you will, extend the opt-out on adult use slash recreational marijuana establishments in the city from February 1st of this year to June 1st of this year. This was approved by the commission on first reading at our last meeting in December. At the time, I was asked or directed to provide the commission with basically a timeline as to how our review of the issues of marijuana would proceed going forward if the ordinance was approved. I roughed that out for you on the memorandum that I provided to you, starting with the second reading tonight. If, if approved, then what I would be recommending and proposing is two or three, if needed, or more if needed, work sessions over the next couple of months to flesh out the licensing ordinance requirements, and then any related tweaks to any zoning ordinance amendments, followed by adoption of the necessary ordinances in April and May in order to have all those ordinances be effective by June 1st of this year, when the opt-out would fade off into the sunset, if you will. The only unknown here in terms of the time schedule, as far as I'm concerned, is if during discussions here at the city commission, if there's a decision that's made that zoning ordinance amendments need to be made, or if there's additional zoning ordinance work that has to be done, and issues have to be referred back to the planning commission for further review and further public hearing, that could extend the timeframe. But, again, those are decisions that the commission will be making as we move through the work session process. At least, that's the way that I envision this, so. The resolution that's been provided is to approve the amendment to the ordinance on second reading. I would recommend approval of that. In terms of dates, at least for our initial public hearing, I've looked at all the calendars and checked with a lot of the department heads, things like that. Couple of dates that I'm proposing at this point in time would be a week from tomorrow, January 21st, or in the alternative, a date a couple of weeks down the road on Thursday, January 30th. So, those are by no means written in stone, but those would seem to work well with other meeting schedules that we have here at the city. And then as we move through those, those dates or that hearing, we can look at dates for February and March if necessary. So again, the action tonight that I would be recommending is to approve the ordinance on second reading. That will extend the opt-out, and then potentially another motion to set a public hearing for January, I'm sorry, a work session, for January 21st or January 30th, or whatever date the commission would deem to be appropriate.
Questions for Mr. Gillum? Commissioner Perush?
I'll move approval of this on second reading, and then, once that is accomplished, I'm assuming it's going to be, then perhaps we can talk about dates. I'll second that.
Yeah, a motion by Commissioner Perush, second by Commissioner Gibbs. Great discussion. Mr. Macy?
I'm gonna renew the concerns I had about this last time, is that we've been trying to get moving on this for over a year now, which is why we were looking to get a schedule. And I thank you for getting the schedule to us, but it seems to me that it's a fairly drawn-out schedule. So we've had a year, we've already had at least one, if not two, work sessions, so suddenly needing three when we've done quite a bit of work already is a surprise to me, and also having to have one per month, and then the next thing that happens after that isn't until the end of the month following that. It just seems like this is quite drawn out, and I won't be supporting this motion.
Mr. Gillum?
Commissioner Macy, I respect your comments, and if we don't need all of the work sessions and all the meetings that are on here, we won't have to have those. I just thought this was kind of a potentially workable timeframe to get everything done by June 1st. If we can have it done sooner than that, by all means, we can. But I'm just trying to be realistic, and in terms of the, the ordinance schedule, and the action on the ordinances in terms of first reading and second reading, unless we want to start talking about scheduling special meetings, those are the latest dates that we can have and still have all the ordinances be effective under the requirements of the city charter and state law in terms of publication and things like that by June 1st. But again, if we can do it faster, we can do it faster.
I think we can. I believe in us.
And, but here's the thing, too. I mean, we don't know what sort of, I mean, we, speed isn't as important as quality, right? And making sure that we're making the best decision on behalf of our constituents, and, you know, right now, I appreciate the timeline. I appreciate the fact that we pushed this out a little bit. My personal opinion is we don't need to be the trailblazer on all of this. I mean, some communities, that may be their prerogative because they have, you know, an economic incentive, or are struggling downtown, or whatever it may be. I think for us, you know, getting additional public input and what that, you know, turns into during this timeframe, you know, could totally necessitate this timeline, or, you know, push it out, or whatever. I think it's incumbent that, you know, we give ourselves enough time to not only collect input, but also process it. We also have some pending litigation, not us, but, you know, there's some legal interpretations that we're waiting for to come down through the system that would affect how and if and where we do this. So for me, I appreciate the fact of this commission's willingness to resolve this one could call voter mandate. Seventy percent of the people in Royal Oak voted for it. We did a survey, and a number of those people want some sort of retail, you know, majority of them want some sort of retail establishment in Royal Oak, okay? But we also, you know, this is something, I think it was made up public comment, we're gonna live with for the next infinite number of years. It's important that we do it right. It's also important that we don't drag our feet either, because all of the people have spoken. So it's, it's a delicate balance, but, you know, I think that things pop up, feedback comes in. This is a reasonable timeline, in my opinion. Commissioner Douglas and Commissioner Dubat?
So, Mr. Gillum, for example, we found that we only needed one work session. Would then this accelerate the schedule by two months? That is, we would be looking at an effective date in April?
Potentially, yeah. It would, it would move everything else up. If any of these meeting dates would fall off, the other dates would move up. That's correct.
So I, I will say that I'm, I feel, with Commissioner Macy, I feel pretty confident that we can, that a solid work session on this subject will bring us to a point, or bring us to an ordinance that I think we can approve. I mean, serving on the planning commission with the mayor, you know, obviously, we went over that zoning ordinance pretty carefully. I read it very thoroughly before our last meetings. I thought we were gonna talk about it. So I'm, I think, you know, we can look at a work session in January, and I wouldn't be at all surprised if we found at the end of that work session that we were able to forego the other two work sessions.
Question Dubat?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sympathetic to Commissioner Macy's comments, but with the understanding that, you know, most of us have gone the entirety of our lives without legal recreational marijuana, if it's a difference between, of two or three months, one way or the other, to ensure that staff has time to do this absolutely right. I'm less concerned that, you know, Mr. Gillum and those that support him are gonna be dragging their feet, and more concerned that even out of this work session, if we have a whole lot of questions need to be researched and answered, that he's not able to do his best work because we've put an artificially aggressive timeframe on that. I believe that he will bring us his best work in as short a time period as possible, and we're just giving the window to allow for that. So I'm okay with this, but I'm also, I'm optimistic that we'll be able to get there sooner, and I have no intention of extending this deadline again. So I think, you know, that's clear in our intent, but I think this is a reasonable way to lay out the way forward. We'll see how the next conversation goes, and I think we'll have a better view to how quickly we're moving. But honestly, if it's, if we say April 1 versus June 1, that's 60 days, and what's, I don't know what the, the difference is to our community of those 60 days.
Commissioner Perush?
I, I think the unknown in this whole component is whether or not, this is just gonna be in front of us, and it just, it's gonna need to be in front of us, or whether or not it's gonna have to go back to the plan commission. I think, if I understand the way the ordinance is drafted right now, the locations are limited to just two types of zoning classifications. It's either industrial, or it's in the commercial that is along the Woodward corridor. And there were some hesitations about limiting the establishments to those areas, because it limits the size of the business, the economic investment of the business that is necessary to locate them in those two areas. And if we wanted to move toward another different zoning classification, and for the life of me, I'm not sure how it would work, but anyway, if you wanted to tweak that a little bit so that smaller, locally-owned businesses that wouldn't have to have as much of an economic investment in a facility could somehow locate someplace else, you might, we might have to send it back to the plan commission in order to tweak the zoning ordinance a little bit to make that happen. And so I, for my, if it was just us, I think we can work really aggressively with the schedule and get it done earlier than June 1st. But if it has to go back to the plan commission, and then there has to be another public hearing involved with that whole process, I can see that stretching closer to the June 1st deadline just because of the, the way the mechanics of the scheduling work. They only meet once a month. And so I, I think we can get it done prior to June 1st, but I think we need to leave ourselves some time in order to deal with it, just in case it does have to go back and the plan commission has to tweak it a little bit. And that's assuming they're willing to do, deal with any, just one meeting. They're not gonna wanna think about it for another meeting. You know, so it's, it's the, it's the prospect of it going back to the plan commission that makes me think that, I think this schedule is, is what we need to do.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Macy?
I guess I'll just say, I don't, don't think we're being artificially aggressive. I feel like this was passed a year and a half ago by the time we're gonna get it off the ground, and we're maybe not representing the will of the people here, but I also feel like there is a cost to us in terms of, of when this happens, because there are, there are people who are out there looking right now and want to invest, and they wanna invest in Royal Oak, but they're not gonna wait if there are other places that they can get their investment in first. And it's not, people are talking about us being a trailblazer. We will not be the first. So we are already perhaps behind, and whether or not we're going to get the best establishments here in Royal Oak is going to be, yet to be seen.
Any other discussion on the motion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Dates.
Dates.
Well, I can't do the 21st.
I can either.
I can't do the 30th.
Oh, Mr. Gillum, all your hard work. We're already pushing discussion.
30th will be a problem for me, too.
The other date I could propose was a week from tomorrow, the 21st.
So me and Ben, we can't do that. We can't do the 21st.
Okay.
Commissioner Macy can't do.
Well, if we walk through the week, we're closed next Monday for the Martin Luther King holiday. The 21st will not work. The 22nd, we have a city school liaison meeting, starting at 6:00. The 23rd, let's see.
I have a senior task force meeting.
Okay.
I have a conflict, too.
Yeah, that's not on the city calendar, but yeah. So then we jump to the following meeting. The following week, the 27th, we have a city commission meeting.
How many hours are we looking for?
Can we do it ahead of the city commission meeting?
You know, to be honest, I, personally, I don't think, at least for the first meeting, I don't think that's really effective.
Okay.
If we try to do it just for an hour or so, I think we need probably two or three hours, so we can grind through some of the details of the two licensing ordinances that I had given to you before.
Okay.
So I'm thinking that we would start at 6:00 and go until 8:00 or 9:00.
We could swap out the strategic planning meeting.
That one was hard to get on the books.
And we've got a consultant lined up.
Yeah, we've got a consultant.
Yeah.
Okay, that won't work.
Can we add it to that day?
No, we'll be beat.
27, 28 is no yet, 26?
I can do the 28.
28?
I can do the 28.
Not at 6:00, so.
There's a re-up Board of Appeals meeting from 7:00 to 9:00.
I don't think any of us are involved in that.
Yes, I am.
Oh, you are?
And it's to approve the block grant budget and allocations for the next fiscal year.
Okay.
29?
We could go to Russell's goodbye party and then come over here afterwards.
I have a ZBA thing at Oakland County, a training thing.
There it is.
This timeline's looking more and more appropriate, Commissioner Macy.
And the, the 30th, the 30th can work for me.
Someone already said don't.
I think there were a couple of conflicts on the 30th, so.
Okay.
Mayor Fornian and I are not able to make that.
Okay.
So then we're rolling into February.
Monday, the 3rd?
It's the same day as retirement. I'm not gonna be able to juggle that.
What time is retirement?
9:00 a.m., 8:00 a.m.
8:00 a.m., yeah.
About the 5th, Wednesday, the 5th. Anything going on on the 5th?
Oh, it looks good.
I can do that.
I feel like I have a conflict that day. It looks open. Of 2021. It's looking free. The 5th?
5th.
All right.
Take the 5th.
February 5th.
Yeah, right. December, see, see? Just trying to push it out.
And what time are we thinking, and where?
Again, I would think 6:00. I mean, normally, the work sessions we do in 3:09.
Yep, we could do it on there at 6:00.
If we're doing it at 6:00, then we'll arrange to have some food brought in for you guys.
Commissioner Dubois says he requests a salad.
I think we normally have a salad, so.
Healthy living. Asking for a friend. 6:00 on the 5th. 6?
Okay.
Good. Is that going to work with all the parties you need there? Or you can check.
Oh, yeah.
If there's a hard issue, then we're going to have to do a doodle. We'll get an email this week, if for whatever reason, you know, we have a couple people on staff side or hired side that can't make it done.
Yeah, I didn't go out with everybody into the month of February, because I'd hoped we would be able to get it done in January, but we'll take this date and we'll run with it. We can at least start the discussion and nothing else.
Okay. All right, I don't think we need any action on that, do we?
Not necessarily, no. If that's the, we'll make it happen, so.
Ready on board with that, 5th?
Okay.
We'll be getting off the plane, so we'll be in great shape for it. All right, so we're good on this topic. Do we have to figure out another date, or can we at least plan to the 5th, and then from there, we can kind of work on, I think we had another blank in that schedule, but it's.
Well, one or two more, I mean, but.
Yeah, we can decide then.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll see how the discussion goes, and in the meantime, I'll check all the availability on the February calendar, and March 2, and we'll go from there.
All right, so we'll move on to item 11, which is the Planning Commission Recommendation Zoning Ordinance, rezoning 111 to 309 North Main Street, second reading. Mr. Twing, I sense your presence, and I am correct.
Good evening, Mayor. This is the second reading of a Planning Commission recommendation to rezone three properties on North Main from general business to neighborhood business. The commission did approve it, and it's a December 16 meeting on first reading. However, the vote was not unanimous, so it wasn't added to the consent agenda. There is a suggested resolution if the commission wishes to pass it on second reading.
Questions for Mr. Twing? No questions for Mr. Twing? Any motions for the table? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'll move the resolution that the ordinance, whatever number it winds up as, be approved on second, adopted on second reading.
motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion. Commissioner Macy?
Just so Mr. Twing didn't waste his time, I'm going to renew my objection to this.
Okay. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes. All right, that brings us to the last item on our agenda this evening, which is the Planning Commission Recommendation Zoning Ordinance Text Amendments, Wireless Communication Facilities, First Reading. Mr. Twing?
As you indicated, the planning commission did discuss potential zoning ordinance text amendments regarding wireless communication facilities. I would point out that the wireless communication facilities, there are provisions in the ordinance already. The draft, or the text that's in front of you, has been broken down into basically three areas. The first paragraph talks about authorizing the planning commission to address some of the setback issues, fall zone issues, and some of those things as part of their site plan review and special land use approval. In particular, potentially requiring a petitioner to submit a certification from an engineer that tower would collapse on itself rather than falling. Under those circumstances, the planning commission could reduce the required setback from the height of the tower to potentially that fall zone. There are some other minor revisions in that regard that are highlighted in green throughout the text, so that's new wording that would be added if you pass the ordinance. As well, the second part are highlighted in blue. This is some of the language that staff added and the planning commission supported in regarding to adding some terminology, definitions for some of the new types of facilities that may be located in Royal Oak and other communities, i.e. distribution antenna systems, small cell systems, and such. And there were some revisions suggested based on the statutes in regards to that, in terms of trying to address those. The third category is highlighted in yellow throughout it, and those are basically wording clarifications, using simpler terminology and terminology that was more standard throughout the ordinance. And then the second part, or the last part, is you'll see some strike-throughs. Those are, that's current wording that is being removed and replaced with the highlighted wording. All the other wording that's simple in text is existing wording under the ordinance. This is first reading, and the planning commission did hold a public hearing and is recommending your consideration for approval on first reading.
Questions for Mr. Twing? Mr. Perush?
We all received today some comments from a representative from Verizon who took issue with some of the wording. I don't know if Mr. Twing has received those. It came in late today, or Mr. Gillum, if they have any reaction to that or comments. This is only first reading, so we can still tweak it between now and second reading.
Well, what I, what I would indicate, yes, Mr. Gillum sent them to me late in the day. I took a real brief look at them. It appeared from the email they may have other comments other than the two sections that were referenced. I would be happy to have staff call them and communicate with them to see if there are other items they're concerned with. What I would point out is the two that were referenced are existing wording. It's not wording that we're proposing to alter, other than, I think there were three wording changes that were, as I said, standard wording. So the two provisions that were addressed in that email specifically are existing. But I'd be happy to have staff communicate and talk and see if we need any modifications between now and second reading.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Macy?
So, following along on that, so is the map currently, people currently provide that map of all the wireless systems in the city when they are applying?
When they're applying for a new location, and in regard, this is for a new tower, okay? It's not in regards to if you want to locate an antenna on the top of the Washington Square Building. We consider the Washington Square Building an existing facility, an existing tower, and it's treated as a co-location. And so it's not, it's not having to provide that, that map to prove this location is necessary. We've already determined that once. So not every time, just when it's a brand-new tower or facility location.
Okay, thank you. Then I had another question about, it looked like that we've changed it from non-residential, now I lost my spot, to single-family residential, other than one-family residential or one-family large-lot residential. So that seems to now be excluding multifamily residential.
I think we've never, from a staff standpoint, included multifamily in a residential, and we wanted to clean it up and make sure that was clear, that if you wanted a tower in a multifamily zone, you could have one under this provisions. So we tried to clean the language up to make sure that's what it said.
So that's reflective of what we've already been doing?
Right.
Okay. And then the last thing I had was, in terms of, I'm looking at C-1D, which is this lessening of the setbacks in order to reduce the impact of a support structure. So it says, "The planning commission may allow lesser setbacks in order to reduce the impact of a support structure, or if it is demonstrated by an applicant that the support structure will either collapse on itself or fall within a distance less than its height."
Right.
So from the, from the letter I wrote at the beginning, and maybe I misread it, I had understood that they had to show that it would either collapse upon itself or fall less a distance than its height.
Right.
So from the, from the letter I wrote at the beginning, and maybe I misread it, I had understood that they had to show that it would either collapse upon itself or fall less a distance than its height. But now it sounds like they could also allow it in order to reduce the impact of a support structure, which I don't even quite know what that means.
If there's, it's given the planning commission a discretion to look at this support structure and determine its location isn't placed in a location where the setback is the primary issue. If they place it on site somewhere where the fall zone wasn't an issue, they could have the discretion to grant that reduced setback. Let's say it's a 100-foot tower, and it's 80-foot from a property line, but they've determined based on the placement, 80-foot is sufficient, they could grant it. On top of that, we're saying if they provide a certification from an engineer that it will fall on itself, then that could be the established fall distance or setback.
Okay, I mean, the second part feels like it makes sense to me, if we, if they can show that it's not going to be falling on any of the surrounding structures. But the first part sounds like, if you can't show that, but we think it's okay, it'll be fine, which seems a little bit.
Yeah, they would have to make that determination. But there are several other setback provisions in the zoning ordinance where the planning commission has the same discretionary review as part of their site plan and special land use approval. So we tried to keep the language similar.
So there's other places where if there's a very large structure built that could possibly fall on a nearby structure, the planning commission can decide whether or not they think it's going?
Well, no, in terms of general setbacks, if a building, brand-new building's being proposed, and it has a setback of five feet, the planning commission has the discretion to let it go to zero or require it be greater. It's part of their review. So the planning commission's making a determination on setbacks throughout the ordinance for other types of uses.
Feels like it should be an engineer. Not that I don't think the planning commission's great.
I will say, if the city commission doesn't like the first part, you can strike it and we'll remove it as part of second reading, so. We just used it as similar language, so it's treated throughout.
I think it's a catch-all to help for extenuating circumstances or when that information is presented. I mean, to know and understand all the engineering consternations or constellations of how something can be designed, if somebody has a real hardship, and they've come up with a solution that can be verified, embedded, and by the confidence of the planning commission, then they can, you know, sell it hard and say, this is what's going to happen. We can get staff opinions, everyone's opinion, and then if that's the case and it's been certified, then that creative solution can be employed.
Understand, the current fall zone distance regarding the height is from a residential-zoned property or from the right-of-way. It's not from an adjacent building. So the only fall zone distance a petitioner that's putting a tower in would have to worry about is how close is the roadway and/or is there a residential zone?
A one-family residential zone.
Pardon me?
A single-family residential zone.
Yes.
Would there be any implications from this impacting the proposed tower a couple blocks down the street by AT&amp;T?
No, that tower's already been approved under the old provisions. It was approved through the planning commission, it was approved through the zoning board of appeals. All of those site plan approvals are in place. I don't believe there's anything in here that impacts that proposal.
Did that one meet the setback requirements as currently stated?
Under the existing standards where it had to meet the height to the tower, it needed two variances from the zoning board, both the fall zone from the right-of-way, and there was a single-family residential zoning over on Troy Street that fell within its distance. So those two variances, the zoning board of appeals granted. Under these new provisions, if they're adopted, if the engineer submitted a certification that it would fall on itself, those two provisions would not, or variances would not have been needed.
Commissioner Douglas?
And in fact, that tower is designed to fall on itself.
Yes.
We're just codifying what we saw in that particular case.
Any other discussion or motions? Mr. Gillum?
I just have one comment about the email correspondence that we received from Verizon this afternoon. We appreciate their input, and as Tim indicated, I did forward that to them, and we'll follow up with Verizon. If they want to have a meeting, we'll have a meeting with them. But just to vent a little bit in terms of my feelings on that, this is an ordinance amendment that was presented for a public hearing at the planning commission over a month ago. It would have been noticed publicly before that meeting. And a month later, the meeting was scheduled to start at 7:30 tonight, and I received that email this afternoon at approximately 4:55. So, again, we'll follow through with them. We'll appreciate, we appreciate their comments. We'll respond to them, we'll deal with them. But again, I just wish the timing could have been a little bit different.
Commissioner Perush?
The only thing I will add is that at least now, they have an actual local representative that you can talk to. I mean, representing another municipal entity years ago, you had to talk to someone in Texas or something who didn't understand Michigan at all, let alone what your ordinance is supposed to regulate. So, I mean, at least you're going to be dealing with someone who's in Southfield and not Albuquerque or someplace. So that's an improvement to a degree.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, I know that the engineering staff is being bombarded with proposed locations for their 5G technology, the small cells, and I'm not sure how much they're concerned about how this is going to affect those applications. Again, those are issues that we'll sit down and we'll talk with them about, so.
Yeah, that's maybe one point I wanted to add. I mean, some of this, we talked about it in planning, is just really being compliant with federal law and through the FCC that, you know, even if, I know there's been some emails, you probably all have received them, about, you know, the small cell networks, 5G, all of this, well, we don't have a lot of latitude to conflict with what, you know, the feds have already approved, and some of these changes have to reflect, you know, and be compliant, or we're just opening ourselves up for.
Generally, generally speaking, the zoning ordinance doesn't deal with the right-of-way, the public right-of-way. It's dealing with private property. And the provisions, I think we've added in here, are attempting to address those ones that may go in the public right-of-way if they impact the private property. I believe, in speaking with engineering briefly, they're, they're treating some of these as needing right-of-way permits and dealing with them through that process and compliance, just as you would any other utility, whether it be DTE or consumers. They're processing them through the right-of-way, right-of-way permits. We don't deal with utilities through the zoning ordinance if they're out in the right-of-way. Again, I think the intent of the provisions, when we reference the right-of-way in here, are simply to say if they're doing something that impacts private property, we want that review.
Right. It's not private property owners putting up small cell towers and profiting from them. It's all through the right-of-way, the utility right-of-way. Commissioner Macy?
So I get the sense that no one agrees with me about this, but it seems very strange to me to allow there to be a reduction of the setback from the height of the structure from the residential zones in order to reduce the impact of the structure. I feel like it's not, I'm not thinking only about the structure falling down, which is of course a problem, an issue, but also probably one-family residentials don't want a structure more than the height away, closer, closer than the height away from them. It just seems like this is, there's hardly, there's hardly any requirement at all to reduce those setbacks, which seem to me like they would be really important to people.
Well, it's basically shifting the ability, because as I said, with the one that was raised on the AT&amp;T building, the appeal to the setback provision went to the zoning board of appeals. They reviewed it and made a very similar determination, I would think, the planning commission would make as part of their special land use and site plan review. It's simply shifting whose responsibility that is to review a request to place that tower closer than the height of it. It's not that it's not going to happen, it's just which body is reviewing it.
Any other discussion or motions? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'm of approval of the resolution with the sections 1 through 5 as specified.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion.
But Mr., obviously, I said on the planning commission, I reviewed this very thoroughly at that time, and Mr. Twing, I think--
at that time, and Mr. Twing, I think, makes an effective case here. This makes sense.
Commissioner Levaser?
This may not impact the AT&amp;T tower, but I think the ATT tower is a good example of what should not have happened in our community. Essentially, this by had no input, no say as to a tower which I think would detract significantly from the appearance of our downtown, and making these amendments, I fear, could lead to other similar situations around town and near residential neighborhoods. There's a lot in here that I may be able to support, but with that concern, I will not be able to support the motion.
Any other discussion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes. All right, that brings us to the end of the agenda tonight, notwithstanding anything for the betterment of the city of Royal Oak. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Motion by Commissioner Gibbs, is there a second?
Support.
I think I saw a very enthusiastic second by Commissioner Macy. That's sarcasm. All right, any discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Adjourned.